I'm going to start with the Goat Hill Public Hearing. And I guess before we get started, if you are going to speak, would you please sign your name up here on the list somewhere along the line, just so that we have a handle on who's here, who's not here, that we can include in the minutes. And essentially, the Goat Hill Public Hearing tonight is to divide the property into an additional lot. And I think, better than me trying to explain, and I think I'm going to turn it over to Carl Davis, and he can explain to everybody who is interested anyway, as to what actually is going on.
Okay. Kenny, you go for the next one?
I'm coming.
Okay. All right. I'll wait. There we go. I don't have a subdivision now.
Okay. Now I can come up with a question.
So when this project first started, there were two options on the farmland section of it. This area here is the 25 acres that the town was buying, and there was 220-odd acres left of the farmland. And when we were first looking for farmers, there was the option of either a farmer buying the whole 220, or dividing it in half approximately from here to here. We did find a farmer that was interested in buying the whole parcel, and then at the last minute, he backed out. We were under kind of a time crunch with the owners, ROMAC sales, they gave us until June 30th to come up with buyers for these two, for this farm parcel. So we put it back out there that we would split it, we found a buyer for this parcel, and we'd have a pretty interested buyer in the other parcel. So we're in here today to subdivide the 220-odd acres, it would be 90 acre parcel here and 118 acres here. Is there questions on that?
I guess patrol out there to make it clear too, is that that second, or actually would become Lot 3 exits and enters to Garden Road.
Right. Yeah, it's road front, as you see here, on the Garden Road. We're trying to divide the field in half. It's fairly close, I think.
Any other questions out there? Comments?
Can you just clarify the easement on the property?
Yeah. On both of these parcels, not the town parcel, there won't be an easement on the town parcel. Both farmland parcels will have an easement put on them, working with Maine Farmland Trust, because they're making a contribution on buying all the development rights on both of these parcels. And sometime after the closing, they'll turn that easement over to Three Rivers Land Trust, and Three Rivers will monitor both of those parcels.
What do you do to monitor?
Well, monitor, we meet with the landowner, two board members meet with the landowners once a year, usually watch the property, talk about what their plans are, making sure that what they're thinking of doing complies with the easement. Try to keep a good relationship going, so that, you know, we don't walk out here and, you know, this big old house in middle of the woods out there.
What other restrictions, besides a house, what they deserve?
What other restrictions? Well, they can't remove the topsoil, because, you know, that's critical with the agricultural land. I don't have an easement right in front of me, when you think about, well, the forest, we'd have to have a forest management plan. If they were going to do clearing to make more field, then they'd have to get a conservation plan through NFCS or a similar entity. Let's see, what else?
Does that change the tax assessment for the land when it goes to conservation?
Yeah, it would be in... I mean, they could apply for farm and open space. That's what, you know, the land trust owns the Hops Farm, and we pay farm and open space taxes. I don't know what these individuals would do, but that would be an option for them as farm managers, because it's going to remain that way forever. It's never...
And what they're going to be raising for their farm? What are they going to raise in that?
Here, it's going to go back to pick-your-own-apple orchard. Over here, the folks we're talking with right now are talking about a hard cider operation. So it would be...
They're giving buddy ads.
Yeah. They wouldn't be in competition with each other, which is a good thing, you know, where you're splitting it. I mean, this isn't a done deal on this side, we're in discussions with them.
So then, why are the options going to remain like?
Correct. Yep. This over here, they've pruned it, they've started to spray it over here, and it's going to happen.
Couple easy questions for you. Who are you and who do you represent?
Good question. I'm Carl Davis. I'm with Three Rivers Land Trust, I'm the Vice President of Three Rivers. We've worked, initially approached Gordon on this project about three years ago. When he first put up a little sign about that big, on an apple bin saying "For Sale", we talked to him to see if there was a possibility of working on a conservation project here, so it wouldn't be developed, and could remain farmland, and also give townsfolk public access to the top of the hill.
Now, how are they going to access the top of the hill?
Yeah, this is short on this map, but... There is a, there are approximately, let's see, I'll get this right, the town line will come down like this, there would be a parking lot approximately here, and then there's a three-quarter mile trail that's going to come up through to here, to the top of the hill.
So it's clear?
You're not going to follow the road that's already there, then, huh?
No. No, 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 not the road. No, the road would be right over here. That's the existing road. The trail actually would come up, the town is only buying wooded parcel.
Do you have to make an access from H Road to the parking area?
Do we what?
Do you have to make an access, an access road?
We have to make a parking lot.
Right.
Yep.
That's from here right off?
Right off the H Road. We worked with Scott Mooney on locating that, you know, so that the line of sites would be correct. The planning board requested that we make it, I think, 10, 12 parking spots.
They want to reduce, remember we were at the...
Yeah. It's, you know where the water hole is, Eric?
Um, you know it.
The shot corner.
Okay.
It's just down beyond that. Hardest to go to that.
I have it on this map, if you'd like to... Any other questions or comments?
No, the map there shows us a whole lot of trees in the bottom left-hand corner, and then there's open farmland, fields on the top, and then on the right-hand side.
Here?
Here's, yeah, that's field.
This is the top?
Yep, on the top left, it's also field, with trees, apple trees in there.
These are apple trees, yep.
On the way up, yeah. Going toward the left, right off. Whoops. Where'd you go?
Yeah, so we have left this field, it's right across the street from my house, there's
a great big field by the apple trees. I live on Garden Road.
Yep, you're here.
Yeah, right at the entrance to that piece of land.
Right here?
Yeah.
Nope, I think that's way too far up. The road that goes to the left.
This is the road that goes right up through to the top of the hill, right here.
Oh, so the other old road there is kind of eagle there.
Where are you? You're here somewhere?
That's right there.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Right opposite the road?
Yeah.
Yep. And there's just the one house up here, and that's it.
All right, so where is the boundary now to those two pieces of parcel of land with respect to that great big, those fields?
Okay, so...
I see the time, you got that.
If you went to the top of the hill, and you went to the southwest corner, the top of the hill, and then you went due south to this point behind the transfer station, that would be the boundary between the two farms.
And so, one of the left over would have all the fields on the top?
The one on the west would have these fields right here. Correct. The line would come right through there, they would have these. Yep. And then this...
I wanted to make sure you were talking about all that land, that that wasn't just being left over.
No. Yes, all this would be included with this one. Yep. All the field land, yep.
Yeah, that's a very big parcel.
Huge.
Right.
So then the other parcel is basically what was, what Gordon was working with as ROMAC orchards?
That was the last thing they operated. I mean, at one time, they had everything in an orchard, but yes, you're right, that seven acres was the last orchard that they actually had pick your own in. And that's what's being brought back right now. I think in the future, if it works, obviously, they'll probably plant more trees, I'm guessing, or, or something. They might plant blueberries or something else.
Other questions? Anybody else from the last time? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing for Goat Hill. And thank you, Carl. Appreciate it. Before the second public hearing, are there a number of people here for that public hearing? What do you organize changes? I'm questioning that only because I may change the format of the agenda, but if there is interest in that, then, you know, and that's why you're here, then I certainly will jump right back into that.
Is this basic, I was keeping...
Some are. Some are. Some of them are nothing more than changing numbers, things like that, but there's more, there's other issues.
I mean, I haven't had a chance to read it.
All right. Well, I think we'll just keep our line to this one. What do you think, you all set for the orchard?
Yes.
Then we'll just follow the agenda, and come back and take care of some of the other business when we open the meeting in a few minutes. Okay, I'm about to open up the second public hearing for the proposed amendments to our zoning ordinance. And in this case, I'm going to turn it over to Ken, who is going to run us through this, so that there's questions along the way asked. It might be easier than when we wait till the end, and then somebody says, oh yeah, back there somewhere, I had a question, but I don't remember exactly where it was. So we've broken it down into a number of different sections, and they are going to be different warrant questions when we get to the meeting in June. And...
Hey, Tom, you skipped in there, I was next on the agenda.
Yeah, but we're still in the public hearing side of it.
Oh, okay.
Matt, as opposed to, we haven't even opened the meeting itself yet.
Oh, he tried to bump you up, that's what he was trying to bump you up there. You know, you didn't jump in. I just spent a lot of time here.
Mike, there's so much on here.
I just see his signature.
The first one's just changing the numbers to get it in the proper order. 1411 is adding in maintain, billing and maintenance, permits are required in that, it's just not
a given. And most of this is all shoreline zoning. 1411.2 will allow people living in the resource protection outside of the shoreline zone to have the same benefits people in the resource protection in the shoreline zone have, or people in the shoreline zone. The 30% expansions and being able to allow to expand existing structures that are now in resource protection. And that is more or less just a town resource protection that is much more stringent than state. 1411.3 looks at allowing the planning board to look at a five-year period when people do improvements to their property, or a 50% expansion. When you have a non-conforming structure and you want to do a major renovation, it maxes out at 50% of the value of the structure. So that allows the planning board to take a look at that, and it puts a cap of the five-year window on it. The second half is looking at improvements over a five-year, preceding five years on that. Removing a lot of local timber harvesting ordinance and trying to just go with state, so this is all striking out. Anything that has strike lines through it is being removed. 214 looks at the Little Ospe District and eliminates the 750 down to 500, that's the San Isak River Carter Commission, trying to get in line with them. 262 gets rid of the prohibition of flag lots and other odd-shaped lots, because, well, we don't have a definition of odd-shaped lots, so we don't know what they are. And then it's just a number of changes after that. In the land use table, it's changing conditional uses. Timber harvesting is being permitted use in aquifer. Sewage, we don't care about there. Filling grading, other earth moving activity, it's changing the numbers there, reducing the 10,000 yards and Little Ospe Shoreline and Resource Protection, and allowing the planning board to have conditional use for up to 500 yards, and in my office, to have up to 999 yards. This is just reorganizing it, it was below under Essential Services, it's been moved up, these four lines here. Renewable energy, these two lines are both new, and it talks about installing a renewable energy on an existing structure and proposed structure. The big thing would be the big solar farms, whether it's a tower that rotates or wind turbines, allowing the planning board to look at that. But if it's just going on an existing structure, we're just assuming that solar panels going on existing roof. These four lines have strikeouts through them, because they've moved up. Definition, cleaning up the definition of basement for inside and outside of the shoreline zone, and getting rid of a lot of the outside, it's just what's in it. Similar to foundation, getting rid of that definition, and just basically any substructure that meets the building code. On 4321, getting rid of not within the resource protection district and out of that definition. 44, shrinking the Little Ospe again from 750 to 500 to be coinciding with Isak River Carter Commission, who is the Little Ospe District people. Individual private campsites, working with state language, bringing that in, that allows the individual private campsite per, the size of the lot has to be large enough for the house and a campsite. If it's a non-conforming lot, that's one thing, if it's just a campsite. The problems we're seeing is somebody on the lake with two or three campers also on the property. So the lot just needs to be big enough for that. And the recreational vehicle, shrinking that down from 120 to 30 days, being tied into some sort of a sewage or having a sewage clamp.
I can understand the RV.
Yep.
But how do you define a private campsite if you have family members camping out over the weekend, or...
The individual private campsites usually is a vacant lot, and you just have the campsite on there.
Oh, okay.
And myself, I don't care if your in-laws or your kids come up for a couple of weeks and the camper's in your yard, even in the shoreline zone, a couple of weeks isn't an issue. But we have several that are there all summer, some don't even leave during the winter, and one turns to two, two turns to three. And the lots are usually 50 by 100 lots, it's fairly big enough for the camp that's on it, and they're using the same system, septic system, and it's all tied into that, so that was the intention on that. And that's state DEP language that we're trying to incorporate into our ordinance, so when it's mandatory to do their update, we don't, we won't have very much of it. We'll piecemeal it up and to keep them happy. Group D is the timber harvesting ordinance. We've worked with the town forester and the Maine Forest Service, and we're removing all of this language here. Basically, it was a local timber harvesting ordinance, we're getting rid of that, trying to stick with state standards. And we had most of the state statutes in the ordinance already, so it's contradicting. One's telling you this, and the other's telling you that, so by removing the local stuff, we'll be able to go with statewide standards. Are you looking at adjusting the timber harvesting standards and resource protection areas? We're getting rid of the local verbiage. That verbiage that says that you have to come and cut in, like square areas, and you have to have like a... No, that's state language. So that would stay. That's state language for all resource protection areas? Correct.
Now, will this harvest permit still go through your office, so you know who's harvesting where, or how much?
You, we're lucky if we get them the same year the timber harvest is happening. So the state has moved now to an online process, where the forester can go online, file it online, print out his notification, and start cutting that day, and we'll get those a few months later. So we're really out of the loop, kind of. We get one a month, maybe? It's hard to really... And that was, when we first looked at going with statewide standards, and that's what the Forest Service, the DEP, all the state is pushing to go with statewide standards. So the forester from Kettering to Fort Kent knows the standards, knows the rules, and that's great. And as soon as we headed in that direction, we started getting complaints, and we didn't know who was doing the forestry, we had no idea there was an operation out there, so we noticed we were losing control of it pretty quickly. There's three options out there. One, the town takes control. Two, we have enough verbiage to keep the state happy, and the state and the town can work together. And then the third is the state has total control of all of it. And I think we're still at the town level now, the state's not happy that we have enough verbiage in there to allow a state forester to come in. They're not going to enforce local laws, they're only going to enforce the state standards.
I, like, there's been a lot of cutting all around the town.
Yeah.
And some of it's quite near water, bodies of water that you have no, you don't know ahead of time that that's going to happen, or that's going to fall over.
Correct. Yeah. Usually, if there is a cutting to a sensitive area, we get calls on it, and we have to go out there, because we don't know who's doing the operation, who the forester is, if they have a forester, so when we talk to the state, and they're pushing us to go towards state standards, that's our main concern, is we have no idea who's doing it, we don't have a contact or anything like that. Even if it was just as easy that when the state, when the forester files his notification on the state, through the state, that they could just post it on a bulletin board, that we could go in, okay, they didn't notify us, but if we could go into some portal and come up with acting and see what's open, and we could track it down and click print, we would at least know, you know, who the logger is out of Porter, Conish, it seems where most of them are from, and know who the forester is. And then there's a phone number, you can contact him. The biggest issue we have is the town has its own resource protection that's much more stringent than the state, so they can get into that resource protection area pretty quickly, and not know it because they were looking at the state maps. So most of the rest of this verbiage, we're just changing the numbers, it's all state language that's in there. Basically, the state's telling the foresters what the outcome should be, and our local ordinance was telling them how to do it. So if the end of the project is just no erosion into the streams, we don't need to tell them how to do it, the foresters are pretty competent. Most of the logging industries feel the competent as well on erosion and sediment control laws.
Good question. Two. So what happens if they're not competent, and it does happen, and they never told you at the beginning, so what, the state would step in and enforce their laws? And somebody's got to tell them, right?
Well, exactly, yeah. Currently, it would be local enforcement, so tomorrow, when we get two inches of rain, and they're still out there crossing the streams and things like that, if somebody made a complaint, then we would, we would act on the complaint. So sedimentation's an easy one to look at, clear cut's a much harder one. What we look at as a clear cut in Southern Maine, it's the same laws for the whole state, it's much different in Northern Maine. 520 is clearing and removal of vegetation activities, other than timber harvesting, just as people with their camps down by the waters. And again, this is DEP language we're bringing in, and this talks about when they're cutting, mostly when it's violations, and how to replant, what to replant, and the species, the amount of trees they need to replant. It also allows a roaming safety hazards and maintaining a certain point system out there. Group E looks at extending, currently, we have seven days to issue a building permit. If we don't issue it in seven days, it's automatically denied. It doesn't get denied, we, you know, work on it until we can get to it. This changes it to state law, which is 30 days. And currently, the state has a statewide building code, it's the 2009, it's moving up to the 2015. We have the 09 verbiage in our ordinance, so by removing the date, we can move up with the state constantly whenever they change, versus putting in the 15 date into those three areas. So we broke them into separate areas, so if there was an issue with one, we wouldn't have the, any specific issue, wouldn't throw out all of it. Most of it's generally housekeeping, and cleaning up, and bringing in state verbiage.
Yeah, Ken, I want to ask you, you're going back to shoreline ordinance as opposed to resource protection. Is resource protection kind of isolated areas where shoreline is defined 250 feet around any body of water, and body of ponds bigger than 10 acres? Years ago, they used to have resource protection, well, I don't know, one I know was without an nation code, and it really wasn't, it was all sand, it was perccable land, and then they changed it. So what I'm trying to do is play the difference between shoreline and resource.
Shoreline zoning is going to be usually around a great pond, the Salmon Falls River, and maybe some small streams that has two, one, two streams come into one, and then it becomes shoreline zoning, whether it's coming out of a great pond or in a great pond. I'm on the town website right now, I clicked on resource protection, so these areas in green are the poor soils, and the brown is the buffer around them, so this would all be resource protection, all these areas would be. We're right here now, so this is up in H Road, as you go down, you're looking at the pond on the left-hand side, so that's all in resource protection, and then there's other areas all through that. The resource protection, you could do a commercial timber harvest in it, but really, no residential uses are permitted in that area.
Now, that brown indicates...
The buffer.
The buffer. When you say buffer, and so is that, that soil's not perccable, it's like a, like a clay, clay type of thing, or...
The wetlands were delineated through Southern Maine, which used National Wetland Inventory Maps, that were developed, you know, over time. We've had several people say, and these buffers are color-coded here, so depending on the size of the resource protection determines the size of the buffer. The state starts at 10 acres, the town of Acton starts at 2 acres, so at 2 acres, it's a smaller buffer than the 10-acre swamps. So with the protected resource in this area, the marks, the... The resource protection, you could do a commercial timber harvest in it, but really no residential uses are permitted in that area.
Now, that brown indicates?
The buffer.
The buffer. When you say buffer, and so was that, that soil's not perccable? It's like a, like a clay, clay type of thing or?
The wetlands were delineated through Southern Maine, which use National Wetland Inventory Maps that were developed, you know, over time. We've had several people say, and these buffers are color-coded here. So depending on the size of the resource protection determines the size of the buffer. The state starts at 10 acres. The town of Acton starts at 2 acres. So at 2 acres, it's a smaller buffer than the 10-acre swamps. So with the protected resource in this area, the buffer stats at the high water marks.
But there are state resource protection districts and town resource protection districts.
Correct. Correct. The state stats at 10 acres of true swamp. The town of Acton stats at 2 acres of forested wetland. And the 2 acre has a 50-foot buffer. The 10 acres is 250.
The town's looking to go to the state standard for all of its resource protection?
Town's looking at going to the state standards for timber harvesting.
For timber harvesting.
It's been six years, seven years maybe, that the town adopted the more stringent resource protection. A couple of years, the first couple of years, it was brought back up to see if it was repealed. And it was negatively looked at. So we haven't touched it for five years. In my office, I see quite a few people that will come in and say, you know, they had intentions of building on this property and now it's all in resource protection, except for a little bit. But the people never come to the meetings to speak. So the board just hears me talking. They don't see the face of the people that are complaining or negatively impact. So without the people speaking, the board's not really seeing it. We see it, but...
Any other comments, questions?
Do gravel standards change for resource protection as a result of these changes? Or is it still 10,000 yards or less?
That's dropped to 1,000, I think, with conditional use. Unless you have a pre-existing permit, then it wouldn't change for somebody that already has a permit. Does this come as a night out for you two? It should, dude. Unless he's taking you out, somebody's seven layers, so it's a night.
Actually, Ken, we came up to tell you about the new state law, about having dogs heads hanging out the windows.
We're talking seatbelting the dogs?
Seatbelting. I just, I just, I didn't want to be, you know, whatever. And we're thinking getting a code enforcement officer for dogs and
Canine unit.
Got a canine unit. We just, we just thought we'd mention that. If you know anybody that has
Dogs hanging?
Hanging canines.
I better tell my neighbors they have two wolf houses right in the back.
Any other questions or comments? One last time. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing for the ordinance changes. Thank you. We are about to open up the meeting for May 4. And I think if the members could at least look at the minutes, if you haven't seen them already. And I think you take a motion. Once you've had a chance to look at them, if you have.
Probably not.
Is there a motion out there for the minutes? Is there a second? Questions, comments, changes? All in favor? Okay, so I think what we'll do then at this point is we'll go back to the Gold Hill and deal with that. Since it was relatively simple and since it was very similar to what we have taken care of in the past, aside from the fact that we are dividing it somewhat. Does anybody have any concerns or questions or comments about this process?
We just did a subdivision where we drew the line across and, well, broke out the town piece. Now we're just drawing this line back here. All the conditions are still on there from the existing one. They'll be transferred from this lot to both of them. It's a lot on Gobbin Road with the same axis. I don't see any issues with it.
Do you think we can deal with the, all the conditions we get are automatically going to move across to this one?
Yep, all the notes are on the plane. Do you have a Mylar tonight or?
Not tonight.
No, no. So he's coming back anyway.
Maybe he'll catch you, Matt, a number of times.
We're going to miss you, Duncan. Me and Carl are going to miss each other.
Is there a motion out there to accept?
I'll make the motion accepted.
Division?
I'll make the motion accepted.
Is there a second? Comments then or questions about the motion?
We just want to clarify that it does meet all. There should be some findings in terms of this decision.
Yep, goes down through the checklist.
Yeah. Or just say the board takes a straw poll that it meets all the standards for the subdivision approval.
Do you want to put that into the motion itself?
That's what I was thinking.
As opposed to going through the whole thing, right?
It could have been the motion to glue it.
Include, include.
Including all the restrictions and reclaims that was set forth on the original, the original proposal.
Are you okay with that as a person doing a second?
Subject to the previous conditions.
Questions, any other comments, Tom? You good with that?
Do we need a sentence in there just as it meets the subdivision standards that were previously accepted on such and such a date? And give it a reference on the state statutes, Title 38 MRSA, Section 4404. Board decided to wait to reading of the statement.
Do you think you agree with that?
Yeah, I was going to say, it wasn't the last meeting that we just approved it, but it wasn't a couple of months ago. February 16th. So it was only a few months ago that we approved the first one. They say all we're doing is shrinking the 217 acre lot into two lots. They're not 2 acre lots, they're 100 acre lots. So it's a pretty easy one.
Yeah, I just think there should be some language. Taking into consideration that the board, based upon February, whatever the hell it was.
16 on the plan.
The new division presented on 5, 400. 5417. The board is in agreement that it meets all the standards that were reviewed on the previous division date, February 16th.
17. It is less than three months ago.
Board is accepting of the idea of waiving the reading of the statement.
You good with that?
I can look at it.
You're good with that? Everybody's happy with that? All right. Anything else, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
You don't have to come back.
Just got to come back. Come back with a Mylar.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We got two public hearings in two weeks, too. Don't come early.
Don't come early.
I mean, we have to do a sign. You just put it up there and sign, right? All right, so maybe we can do that. Maybe we can do that.
Or can we just drop them off with Ken? We could just sign it?
I mean, I'm fine with that if you are.
Most of these I don't see in between meetings, but it takes a little while to get them done anyways.
We need three of you to sign it. That's a quality.
I'm close by and she just told me a letter, I'll pick it right up.
I have a race to my wife's door.
All right, so if you can get them in here.
Yeah, I'll get them in here.
Okay. I mean, it'll save you a round if you
Big Kent.
I'll see Joe tomorrow.
All right. Joe's good at that.
Yeah.
I've been nice when he's left here and come back, you know, in minutes.
Now he's in the city, though.
That's true. Okay, Matt, I think you're ready to take some stage. Couple of questions for you, Matt. Actually, one question. Go through the, this one. This is the one that has the red.
Yes.
And some of you will see that you've got two manuals. One of them has got the changes in red marked, you know, that we talked about over the last couple of meetings. And Matt kind of took it and put it into the manual, but pointed out exactly where those are. The question I have, I guess, is not finding in here, doesn't mean it's not in here. But I didn't spot it. The idea of not having crushing in the summer months.
Can I see a copy?
You're going to see my pencil mark. And again, maybe that's not the spot, but that's where it seemed like it.
Yes, it is on page 17. It's under section of the material processing operation.
That's fine.
Is it in red?
Yeah, it's in red.
Okay, and that's fine. I was looking for in the place where we start talking about operation and the different activities and things like that. And I wasn't there and I just probably just looked at hard once I got past that. I already written the note. It's there. It's there. Anybody else have anything to add or ask of Matt?
Wait, where's Gavin?
You're the shame man when you're late.
Somebody got a flat top, you see.
Just pull the bell stem up.
All right, so we have all paperwork for us to sign.
I do, yep.
We have to go through it to make sure that what's on there is what we agreed to on the final.
Thing on the plan that you want to change was that you wanted me to reference the operations manual. Your document. You wanted me to reference the other documents that were going to make up the approval. So we got a note in here that, just, just that, says, okay. Said operations shall conform to the operations manual entitled H Road Gravel Pen Operations Manual. Groundwater information referred to the entitled groundwater monitoring wells report. On site spill control and countermeasures shall conform to this spill control and countermeasures plan. So the plan references the three other documents which make up the approval in this case.
And you're good with that? Ken, you're good with that? Any other going after pens?
Just copies. You just want the Mylar set.
This is your last trip?
I'll be back, I'm sure. You guys are going to miss me, huh? I thought you guys had done that log one to work with, actually. Oh, that's nice. I put something in there that said that we will notify the town when operations pick up as well. And we're not starting until 6:00 AM.
They can't even build the property before 6:00 AM.
Now it's daylight, or what? Well, 4:00 to 5:00, pretty close.
Okay, there's one.
Thank you, sir.
Were they all going to sign today?
No, just three.
Oh, you can find and sign. I need at least three.
So we go, God, give me something to do.
That's true. And then once you record those at the registry, we'll take one back.
There's more than one to sign. Don't run too far. Didn't look past the first one?
Upside down.
We have to go through standards on it.
We did it last time.
We did.
But you notice I'm lucky that people always have education.
Are the signs the paper ones? Is that the other one? We've got three signatures on it. Paper ones get signed, too?
Yeah. They're looking for the paper ones and you record it. We'll take one of the recorded copies back. Sign one paper copy to them.
And you take the Mylar lot to record it. And then they give you a copy of the report.
This part of my hand is swollen.
These dry really fast.
That's drying.
Yep, they stay up tight. The wrong handles. There are 100 of them.
If the registry deeds has it, then. Yeah, it should, it should be.
You know, it just seems like in some cases where that sign seems like I've signed tons of them. Okay, Matt? I think you're set unless you have a question. You need a minimum of three. When did you start? When was the first time you came before us? When did you start, what was the first time you came before us?
By the states are.
And I carry, I carry with my left hand.
Especially now that this is approved, the state will be really interested in it, you know, in the first minute. So we're gonna, we're gonna reapply this here.
We gotta worry, it was lovely, I'm pointing in Washington.
Alright, as far as the agenda is concerned, I know it's on the agenda.
Only because of something.
Okay.
I mean, they could, it could be a difference, but just if something...
Okay, so it's just for housekeeping? Well, we hang around, let's do it, right?
Although we can't touch it now. Alright, thank you guys so much for everything.
Take it easy. Okay, so then everything else under old business is really just housekeeping and keeping a spot for us as we move forward. And the next thing that I see on the agenda for tonight is the best possible location at the bottom. You go with that, Ken?
I'm on it.
What everybody says, where the heck is it?
It's the first thing I said, you're in the wrong town.
It's on Grady's Lake. I know in New Hampshire, I...
Let's go to the little beaches and all, I'll just go those.
You go in that way?
Yeah.
So it says parcel right here.
Number two?
Number one.
Number one.
How do you get in there?
Yeah.
At the canal, you go in through the canal and versus going down on Blaze, you go in...
The canal that goes to Horn?
Upstream. Canal Road. Go past Horn and right up the border, take a right into the Grady's Boat Launch Facility. Most of that's in New Hampshire, what you're going, but Henry Point is still out there. There we go. There we go. So it's probably a hundred acres or so out there. But they divided it right at this lot here, the family is keeping the resource protection and swamp and selling the waterfront in the large parcel. I've seen the place for years up there.
So Ken, are you on it?
So it's all made out of cement, the whole place is all cement. The person that's bought it wants to convert this into a gazebo type area. It's not going to be a dwelling unit, it's 25 feet from the water. They've been going through the 50% process, trying to remove 50% of the value, which they do have. That's the boat house, we don't care about that. And that's the waterfront right straight down over the cliff.
How steep is that?
Um, it drops right down. You know, maybe it's...
Do you have to pay attention as you're going down, or you slip slide?
If you are going to there, to access the water, they don't go down there, they go around the other side, but it drops off five or six feet fairly quickly. So they were working with a real estate appraiser to remove 50% of the value. The real estate appraiser had said, due to the foundation and slab, it's a unique construction out there, that they can remove the roof and the walls and still 50% of the slab still stayed there. Me and the state were kind of odd that you can remove so much of it and still only be 50%. And it's hard to get a good photo of that there. It's a concrete bunker, and all I could just picture is people, you know, chained to the walls. And when you get in there, highways are two, two feet wide at the most, there's metal beds everywhere, but no beds, it's really, really odd shaped.
How old is it?
Uh, I think World War...
World War I.
Is this what I used to do, was the boys camp up there?
No, that's just...
It was a prison camp.
So they've been going through, and we started this last November or so, and they got an appraiser to say 50% of the value, and I think they were saying it's only about 26 to 30% of the value. And again, if you remove less than 50%, you can rebuild the place. So he wants to get rid of this block structure, keep the foundation, and rebuild right where it is. So they've been working with the 50% and we just didn't feel confident that their appraiser was doing it accurately. And it's an extremely complicated way of doing it. Removing the value, but when you look underneath, this is the foundation that's there, this is an elevated slab, all out of concrete, rebar, steel, all over the place. Port cased concrete steel beams that are concrete main carrying timbers. The footings go down deep enough, they've had a structural engineer report that, you know, it's easy to build off of, it isn't a big deal. So as we, they spent a lot of money on their appraisers and adjusters. We're trying to, I sent it to the state, and we're all kind of saying, if you remove the roof, the walls and everything, you still have 50% left and it's just a slab and a foundation. It just, it's tough to pass the straight face test. But we're looking out there that it has a foundation, and if we do relocation, the board can consider the foundation as being worth building on, whether it's a camp or whatever, that would be something we could consider as the foundation. And we said the other day, why don't we just go through relocation and take a look at the, you know, show the board the foundation that's out there. So they're gonna keep the foundation where it is, obviously with the slab, get rid of what's up top, and they're just making it a three-season gazebo type thing, and they're going to be building behind it, the house.
So does that mean then, under those circumstances, that the 50% doesn't come into play?
Correct. Because when the 50% comes into play, such as the other projects we looked at, we require a daily log from the people that are doing the work out there, reporting to us what's being removed. And as soon as you're removing something that's not on the log from the appraiser, then you need to get the appraiser back and we need to change these numbers. So when you're on a project and you're removing 49.9% of the project, and you get into it, and all of a sudden you've got more to remove, you can't, because we'll relocate. We had that with an individual last year that did a renovation, and we were really clear on the 50%. And his contract is warrant, and he had to come back in after he did the work and move his camp back. So we try not to, we try to cut that off before it happens.
We have to jump, let's get that foundation out of there, hit the blast.
Exactly. And the foundation is usual, usable, so it is something that the board could consider in the relocation process.
So we're here to consider a relocation, even though it's not going to be a new home?
The best practical location is in the location that it is in. And we do that for accessory structures, sheds as well. In this case, it would be eliminating this, it is a dwelling unit, we would be eliminating it as what it is. And then they would be building a, like a timber frame gazebo type thing is the proposed.
And we're 25 feet from the water? Where are our sidelines?
A hundred to be.
I thought it was real narrow.
It looks real narrow, but I think it's 300 feet or so on the water.
Can we look at that map again for me?
Yep.
Just curious about what their access is coming from.
They have a road that comes off of VZ Cove, VZ Point Road.
And where's that, Ken, on that map right there?
VZ Cove, you come into Grady's Lake as you're going into the boat ramp, and then you just keep going out and it hits the cove, or it goes out to the point, their access is right through there.
I think it's a dirt road, it's too rough.
Yep. It's, I've never seen anybody out there, there's been an old camper there for the last 20 years and nobody's even used a camper. So we had a lot of, when this went on the market last year, we did have a lot of calls from it for it. We don't even have the bunker placed on the map. It is 600 feet straight across, and it's out on this little point peninsula area.
So are we kind of held hostage here, where this...
Well, you can consider the foundation, because it is viable, and the state would basically encourage you for it. So any relocation, you have to look site specific, is there a place to move it back? If they were to remove the foundation, then clearly it would be relocated all the way back to meet the setbacks.
I'm just curious about the acceptance, is the notion that that's a structurally sound slab?
Correct. The local structural engineer went out there with them, there was two or three feet of snow and they had to walk out there. It's a good, almost half a mile, I think. So there's some huffing and puffing going on in there.
This is the gentleman that lives on Rupert Drive?
Correct. And then once we get into the building design, it's all gonna be engineered.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what point loads where they didn't...
Oh, definitely.
Consider those being dropped before.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so it's all gonna be, a structural engineer's gonna do the whole place, just because of how they're designing it, they're going to need it for the upper building to support the bottom.
Ken, take your own role.
It was that last summer, I was in Europe, and I saw houses just like these, in Rome. In Athens. On a cement block.
Did he say how long that lot was? From water to the back corner? Six hundred feet going across, that's a, that's a long way back.
Probably a couple thousand feet, maybe?
From the water to...
To the back of the lot.
I think that would take an eight-month strike. It looks like it.
Where's the lot, did I lose it? It's this one here, right?
Yes, yeah. You only see it in the front part.
I imagine, probably some lost some time to build that thing.
Or like concrete steel. They'll be self-conditioned. Once you eat it, though, wouldn't say, once it was eaten, but until you got it long, it freezes to death.
You guys have the same pictures, the same...
Yes.
So, who do you think, anybody?
I think you're not gonna move, you're gonna get, you're gonna blast not to get out of it.
It looks like the largest trees in coast parks, have you seen any? Lots of it.
I mean, it's hard to make a call on anything without seeing what it seems.
Well, you go look at it, I'm walking it.
Yeah, it'll be a... John, must be, take a water rip.
Go by boat.
I don't know if Ken's got the boat or not, I don't know.
They have no way of, I mean, if they have an entrance over here, you can't drive to this.
I know there's a road goes in off of the loading racks, there's a road that goes in there, but how far maybe goes?
But there's a number of roads up, down through that area.
Well, if that goes around the point, it'll go around the side.
Because we have friends that lived out around there, by the New Hampshire side.
Yeah, from lot three over, it wouldn't be much of a stretch. And that's accessing a very old facility.
It just seems odd, you've got a place that's all concrete, and obviously they don't want to move it.
There must be something in there.
It's not easy to get to it.
There must be an access road for trucks to get in and pour the concrete.
With Ken?
No, I think it was off of...
By E.
By E.
Yeah.
Those huge blocks.
So when you go there, are you, you park way out here and then walk all the way in?
That's what they wanted me to do, but I don't have that type of time, so we drove in.
Or you just forced the issue?
Yeah, yeah, there's some mud going through and stuff like that. So the real issue with the board is, it is a foundation, it is viable, they clean to reuse it, and that's something to consider as they're reusing the foundation. I think we've done a couple of them, but if it's a block foundation or something like that, I would say no. Because they probably wouldn't reuse it, it's not a viable thing. It's not a dwelling unit, they're planning to build the house, they have to build the house back behind the 100-foot zone, so...
Do they have a spot to cut with a, with a house?
The house behind the 100-foot line, into the hill, yeah. So they were hoping to get the gazebo going this year and then go from there. At least they used a local structural engineer that was okay with the existing foundation, the type of construction they're going to do is going to need the whole thing. The whole new building has to be all engineered. Because of the amount of wind that's on this property, this is a very exposed point. So, in my opinion, if they're reusing the slab and the foundation, which is viable to use, it is a reasonable thing to say that is the best location. If you're going to reuse that slab, that is something that the board should consider versus saying, no, you can't reuse your foundation, you have to go back behind it.
What's the definition of the gazebo, just to make sure that we're all thinking the same thing?
It's, it will have walls in it, but it's not a dwelling unit, and they're not going to be sleeping there and stuff like that, the house is gonna be behind you. I mean, they may sleep in it. The house proposed is going to be on the larger camp size that we're seeing.
Bathroom in this gazebo?
Electrified plumbing?
Electric plumbing.
Oh, so...
In the gazebo?
Yeah, no heating.
But electricity and plumbing?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not going to be a shack issue, it's going to be a higher-end command or whatever terminology's out there.
So what would be, if they're gonna build a house, let's say 120 feet back, say, okay, well, you can't use this, because it's too close to the water, we don't feel it's...
Then they'll do the 50%.
Oh, then they could be able to do...
Yeah, so we do have the paperwork that says, you remove the roof, you remove the walls, you get down to the slab, and that still leaves, I think they're at 70% of the value. So according to the, and the appraiser, adjuster, is working directly with the DEP to make sure he's got it right. Because the other ones we've done were, they were moving 25, 28, 30%, so it still left 20% fluff. Removing 50, and the crush is gone, but the slab just didn't, was harder to swallow. But the document's there, the gentleman is licensed, certified through the state, he was gonna clean up his numbers. One of the areas that made it seem really, really off is he went with the town assessment, which is only 33,000. So he had to go get a... So he had to go get a brand-new assessment for the building, which it's hard to assess a concrete building.
That's exactly...
It, it's so unique. Yeah.
Dude, if you're gonna put a bathroom, if you're gonna put a bathroom facility, you know, toilet facility somewhere, not, you're gonna have to, say, a shed or a septic tank a hundred-some-one feet away.
Correct, it would drain out back to the tank, and then up into the field for the, for the house.
Because, see, they're not gonna have a septic tank, you're just gonna have to go back to it all the way back.
Correct.
So I mean, I'm wrong with the source.
Correct.
What was the newest value?
For the, for the project?
For the building?
For the camp, I haven't got that back yet. So, like I said, we started this in October-ish last year, and I had just mentioned when we, uh, the state met out there with the contractors last week, and we had just brought up, look at the foundation for relocation, and we may be able to get away from the fifty percent rule, because that's the, the toughest one to work with, is that fifty percent value.
How feasible is it to remove the walls without damaging the slab?
Pretty, pretty easy.
Cement block, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they just cut them, grind them, work on them.
What, what makes a gazebo different from a bunkhouse, now that I know that there's electricity and plumbing in it?
A bunkhouse is...
Summer bunkhouse.
Exactly, and this already has a kitchen, a fireplace, uh, plumbing, must have electricity, but I just don't remember seeing a lot of it in that. Um, so it's already a dwelling unit, so a bunkhouse, and we don't have a definition of a bunkhouse, that was one of the things we were going to do this year, but we'll, we'll push it back a year, because we had enough to do. Um, a bunkhouse is a room for sleeping with no plumbing in it. So this would be, the, the home proposed out back is going to be with the, they sleep. There could be kids down here or something like that, but, um, the house out back is high end.
But if there's only a bathroom in, in sink, but shower probably, because you have to put off the water, if there's no kitchen facility or nothing...
And they, they may put a kitchen into it, I don't have final plans for it, but it's one big open concept, it's not a bunch of rooms labeled as bedrooms.
I can't handle the...
Yeah, yeah. That was only that thing, it, it is closer to the water, but there's a huge buffer, um, they've got a forester that was working just to cut a path down through to open up the roads, and they didn't do it last year because the forester wanted to relook at, they were, they were all set to go last year, and the forester just slowed them down to get it right, and they all wanted it done properly, as far as, um, keeping it natural and looking like it belongs in Maine.
So you said there was a buffer, what's the buffer that you're talking about that's between the house or the gazebo and the water?
It's all heavy, heavy, large pine trees everywhere.
But the land's still got a slope truly to the water, right, from the twenty-five feet?
Not much of a slope. There is a slope that goes down, but then it drops off as a cliff. So we do the same stormwater management.
Ken, when was, was this divided recently into the two lots?
Correct.
And is there, has anybody done any calculation if, to see if they can build on the, uh, inner lot?
The remaining lot?
Yeah.
The family that's owned this lot forever, um, loves the swamp, and that's the swamp as you pass, New Bridge comes into canal, it's the one on the right, they love it, and they wanted to keep that lot in the family, so nobody would ever build on it.
So there's no...
So this owner, and they're just gonna sever it right there, this waterfront owner won't have the back lot access. Um, they wanted to protect that there, we did have a talk last fall, as in Three Rivers or something, with that back lot, if that was something that they may be interested in. And it's not all resource protection, but it still probably gives twenty acres or so on the surrounding there.
Yeah. I'm just, I was curious if they, if the delineation of the RP pre-fully building, anything out there, they don't wear that.
Yeah, no.
It's not, not the case.
No, it's still a fairly good-sized lot.
Well, who's that, I think?
The unique aspect of it is how the foundation was made. Uh, got another individual on Grady's with a whole block foundation, and he was gonna do the same route, he was gonna save the foundation and, uh, try to use that as a, uh, mechanism to keep the place where it is. And once he talked to a few builders, they all said, yeah, the foundation's gotta go. So now he's accepted the fact that the whole thing goes into a dumpster. This one here, uh, it would be quite a bit of work to rip that elevated slab up, the amount of steel that's in it, and the footings and stuff.
What, what is the, uh...
So actually, they wouldn't, they'd do the fifty percent.
What is the wall construction below the slab? Is it a porch?
Yes.
Wall?
Yeah.
And then block on top?
And then block on top.
And they did that by hand?
And they did that by hand. So I would think back then, you may have gotten a concrete truck out of Sanford, but...
I don't wanna go there, but I'd like to meet these people.
The people that built it. They own the swamp now.
That was in Europe last time, you saw the same kind of buildings all over the place.
So, so where are we at here? What are we gonna do before we get out of here?
So foundation is one of the, in the criteria to look for it, um, you know, removing vegetation, all that stuff, the stuff we look at, and the existing foundation is one of it.
That foundation will, will hold up anyway?
Yeah.
The way it's built.
Yeah.
So essentially, they're making, building another house, but just, just a summer house?
Um, I would call this the house, who was behind it?
Compared to what they're gonna build behind it, what if they weren't?
What if they weren't building behind it?
Oh.
I would say if they were trying to convert this dwelling unit, rip it down and build a brand-new one on top of it, it would be the same situation, that the foundation is good enough to use for a new structure, whether it was a house or a dwelling unit, it's still the same thing.
The foundation is built by the local government.
Yeah.
So, so again, let's, let's assume for a minute that we, in, in my mind, a gazebo's got multi-lines coming down from the...
Off the glass.
So, so can we put some controls on that at least, so that those roof lines come in directions perpendicular to the water, as opposed to toward the water?
Um, we would have a, do a stormwater management plan that's going to put the water in the ground, whether it comes off on the sides or on the water, so it's all going into the water.
And twenty-five feet, you'd be confident that that stormwater management thing would, would do the job?
Yeah. Because on the other hand, they can do the fifty percent and do whatever they want.
And leave it the way it is.
And leave it the way it is.
So we go back to what I said right from the beginning, we are kind of held hostage.
Someone.
Company to the rock, hands to it.
And calling it a gazebo just doesn't sound right.
And then a bunkhouse would be a better...
Yeah, I mean, it's, just what they're, just what they're trying to call it.
Uh, gazebo was my terminology, probably, um, accessory building is what I would issue the permit of.
Would, would it have solid walls, or would it be partially screened, or...
Solid walls on three, open on the front, enclosed though, um, all glass.
It's getting better and better.
Yeah.
From what I had in my head originally.
Why don't you just build the house right there?
He wants to build behind the hundred-foot to get the house he wants.
Oh.
He wouldn't be able to do it down there. There's too many trees to cut and stuff down in that area.
One thing he'd fix, if, so it doesn't become a year-round place, and no heat answer, they can't live in the weather. And the other thing would tap it so that, uh, the windows could be screens in single pane glass, and whether you can make it a house.
I would, and the building permits are gonna say that it's not a dwelling unit. So, I, you know, they may put a gas fireplace, or reutilize the wood one that's in there or something, but, um, they live in Florida currently, so...
And they don't know what made it in the winters like that.
They don't, uh, live there in the winter.
All right, who do you think, anybody? Big storm balls there, what?
I think that's, um, raindrops in the assesses camera.
Really can't do much, really.
We, uh, I guess options, what, we have, make a motion, we opt to go see it?
I wish that I could make that.
Table it?
I'd love to go in there, but I can't make the wall, I just see the dead thing.
Your recommendation would be to...
The foundation is viable, it's worth using, it's one of the criterias to consider, and I would think, uh, I'm all for moving everything back as often as we can, but, uh, in this case, the foundation is being reused.
It wouldn't have a larger, much larger roof area than it has now?
We, they actually are planning to reduce the size, they won't be using the thirty percent, it'll actually be smaller than what it is.
No, we got a code.
Because it's gonna block you from the house to the back.
Now, for dwelling, the code is two-by-six frame, right?
Um, R twenty insulation.
Yeah, okay, so the two-by-six frame. So if he built it with a two-by-four frame, it would be, that would be an outbuilding.
Oh, then spray, spray foam in it, you'll have an A thirty or something in it.
Yeah, I guess you can get around it.
Yeah, and there's ways around it, so...
As I say, as long as Kenny's got there, you can, with language, or with any chance that this is ever gonna be a residence, you know? There's no insulation, they don't require, required to be un insulated. I don't know if you can do that, but I...
The only way I could, well, I'm, I'm writing the permit for an accessory building, that's what they're asking for. If they did not build the dwelling unit out back, then they could say, we wanna make this the dwelling unit. But with the size family he has and the size camp proposed, um, this is just a gathering area down by the water, is the, is the intention they're telling me they wanna use it as.
If you're satisfied, you know, what reason we have all...
Um, it, it was enough concern that the DEP went out there, the showman zoning, garbage, and, uh, that was their thoughts as well, too, the foundation seems good enough, and that's one of the criterias to, um, use. I wouldn't say it's a loophole, it's just how the regulations are used. The landowner, if you have a perfectly good foundation, uh, we could, can't really make them rip out a port concrete foundation and fill it in, and then build right behind it.
What kind of a septic is in there right now?
A pit in the ground type thing.
Cessible.
Cessible, yeah. So this will be going to the tank out back, and then into the...
And it'll be pumping out to leach?
Yeah.
You can put incinerator toilets, it's a, you know, you're not doing so...
Make sure it's not a dry well.
All right, anybody, do we have a motion?
I think we accept Ken's recommendation. And make a, no, second, just make a motion.
Yes, comment, questions before we vote?
If somebody got a, if somebody got a full mood, they could let me borrow right out the table.
All right, all in favor? Hesitantly, but go by hand, go ahead.
And again, this is a port concrete foundation with an empty rebar. If it was a substandard block foundation, or a foundation with all types of crack there, I would be saying no, that, that foundation's not adequate to build on, never mind be the key to hold you there, but for the age of the foundation, it's in much better shape than some foundations, I see they're just one or two years old. I mean, I, I couldn't find a crack in it.
What, if they've built a thing?
Exactly, yeah.
All right, do you have anything else?
No.
Um, motion adjourned?
I get, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Seconds?
Seconds.
All right, all in favor? All right, thanks, Virginia.
Okay, thank you.